Okay, it looks like everybody is on and it's 7 o'clock. So let's go ahead and get started with the public hearing for this evening.
Commissioner, this is Bob. Do you want me to handle this?
Yes, please.
Okay, this is the time and date set for a public hearing with respect to an ordinance amending Chapter 240 of the township, amending ordinance related to automobile service stations in the township. I'd like to make part of the record, the legal advertisement for this public hearing, together with the letter sent to the Allegheny County Department of Development, as well as their comments. The purpose of this ordinance is to establish an automobile service station, which is something by definition can provide fuel and a convenience store type of operation under our definitions. In the C2 zoning district, currently, the C2 zoning district permits it as a matter of right, without any specific criteria. We were now proposing to establish it as a conditional use. And we've, in the proposed ordinance, we have developed criteria, approximately 15 different conditions that can be opposed for this use, including spacing requirements relative to the use of 1,500 feet from property line to property lines. And you can't have two any closer than 1,500 feet. There's specific criteria with respect to canopy, pumps, lighting, sound, noise, that type of thing. So with that, I would ask, does any member of the public have any questions or comments? And if they do, we're going to have to swear them in. All right, hearing done. Does any member of the board have any questions or comments?
No.
No. Okay, with that, will somebody make a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Make a motion, we close the public hearing?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That'll conclude the public hearing.
Okay. All right, well then, let's get, let's get started on our regular meeting. Before we get started, I just want to disclose to the public that we did hold an executive session prior to the meeting this evening to discuss personnel matter. Peggy, can you please do roll call?
Commissioner Dinosek.
Here.
Commissioner Schre.
Here.
Commissioner Horowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Rodi.
Here.
Commissioner Milos.
Here.
Okay, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which it stands, one nation. Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, at this time, do we have any public comment?
Is there a way to see who else is on here? Is it just us? Is there anybody from the public on?
There are. You can scroll down.
You should see my screen lists as participants. I mean, it lists 23 people, but some of them are staff.
Oh, I got it. Sorry. Go ahead. Sorry.
That's okay.
This is, this is Ben Horn. In fact, I was just going to make a quick comment for the library, if I could.
Sure.
Yeah, so this is Ben, I'm the library director. I know John mentioned in his report this month, the library is getting ready to reopen a little bit and offer some more services, which we'll be doing over the next few weeks. It's limited based on timelines or timeframes, as well as services of what patrons will be allowed to do, and it's very limited access only to the library portion of the building. But we are going to be getting, ready to do that over the next couple of weeks. And I also just wanted to remind you that September is Love Your Library Month throughout the county. Typically, we have our Beer for Books fundraiser during September. Obviously, this year, we will not be having it, but we do have a number of digital fundraisers going on. So we have an online raffle with some donated prizes from local individuals, including the library board and organizations that are through Rally Up. So the tickets are available for that. We're also having a Teddy Bear Tea Party virtually on Zoom next Saturday. And then, the last Thursday in the month, we're having a trivia night at 8 o'clock with Bridgeville Library. And we also sent out mailers this month to approximately 2,500 residents here in the township to hopefully raise some money, as it is all matched, prorated match by the Jack Buncher Foundation. So again, hopefully, you've seen some of those advertisements. And to learn more, you can go to southfayettelibrary.org/loveyourlibrary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing as there's no additional public comment, let's move on to correspondence.
Yeah, light correspondence. We received a report from Oak Ridge Volunteer Fire Department. It's a monthly report identifying the number of calls they've responded to this month, as well as other activities they've, they've participated in, both drills and, you know, some administrative meetings and whatnot. My understanding is from the chief there that they intend on just providing this to us on a, on a monthly basis to, to give us more information as to what the department is working on. So not, not much to do there, nothing for you guys to do formally, but it's some information there that, that they've provided to us.
Okay.
John?
Yeah?
My computer's right there. Yeah, I'll just, just let me know.
Do you have an iPad or something?
No, no, I have my own laptop.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Dinosek, some technical difficulties, but he's, he's logging back on.
All right, while he's getting logged back on, let's move on to consent calendar items. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to pay the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bank account balances?
This is there for just transparency's sake. Nothing to do other than to take a peek at them and understand where we are fiscally. So, yeah.
I didn't, where, did I miss that? I didn't have it in my packet.
I'm actually not seeing it on, on my.
I went through all the bills and the itemization of all the bills, but I didn't see any other.
Yeah, for some reason, it didn't make it onto the initial agenda. And then we had to put it on a, after the fact, let me see if I refresh. There's a refresh. Lisa, if you refresh. Yeah, it came up. Probably see it. It was, it was added late.
Okay, I, I, okay, I didn't see it. I'll, I'll look at it. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, my apologies on that.
Okay, well, then, let's move on to department reports. Let's start with building permit reports.
Yeah, the monthly report for the building departments in front of you. A lot of new home permits. You'll see that Charter Homes and Lafayette Meadows make up the lion's share of those. So really, a ton of activity. If you skip to the end and look at where my cursor is, the fees collected for the month is 20,000, nearly 20,000, which is close to double what it was this time last year. So a really productive, busy month for the department in terms of permits issued.
Okay. All right, then let's move on to communications and community development report.
Yeah, Andrea, I'll pull it up for you. And if you want to talk the board through it, I'll scroll along.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. A couple of highlights from our report. You would see attached to the end of the report, the draft magazine survey. So you have an idea of what that's going to look like when it comes out this fall in the magazine and online. And there are some of, kind of a preliminary list of some of the items that'll be in the fall magazine. I'm completing, over the next couple of weeks, the gathering of content for the magazine. So if any of the board has any topics that they might be interested in seeing covered, please let us know as soon as possible. And then, kind of at the end of the report, John, on the bottom of the second page, I just wanted to note that we did get full sponsorship for the glass recycling collection that's going to be held November 28th through December 3rd, right after Thanksgiving. Thanks to PRC sponsors, as well as Steel Hole Builders and Goldberg Cayman Garvin. They transferred their sponsorships to the glass recycling collection. So again, that'll be no cost to the township. And those are my highlights. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Andrea, maybe just a moment, I'm showing your survey. Tell us what the plan is, once you've collected sufficient responses from folks. How will we use this?
It'll be used as data to help enhance our content and also determine whether there are any additional actions we should be taking related to advertising. Also, having data on the readership is a question that advertisers, even our current advertising sponsors, ask about at times in order to determine whether they're going to be an ad sponsor. So it's good data to have, both for the township and for advertisers. And it's also something that we will share with the readership and the public publicly, once we have the data.
And this will be an insert? Is that correct?
It'll be available online, and it will also be available as a page in the magazine that we'll be able to tear out and then put in a supplied business reply envelope and mail back to us for those residents who perhaps don't use or prefer not to use online.
Great, thank you. Any, any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, it looks good. Thank you.
I just had a question, Andrea. On part of your report, you had something that said transfer sponsorships. I'm not exactly sure what that is.
Oh, yes. At the beginning of the year, we sent out, in conjunction with Parks and Recreation, our usual annual sponsorship forms. And we received some sponsorship money for in-person events that were unable to be held. So we worked with the sponsors to transfer them to our other programming, such as virtual recreation programming and glass recycling.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Andrea.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to Park and Recreation's report.
Great. Paula, you out there, are you able to talk us through your report?
Yep, I am here. So our virtual programs are going well and growing. We just ended three of our virtual challenges contests that we had. And we'll be announcing the winners this week. It was the Get Outdoor Challenge, both adult and family. There was the Park Scavenger Hunt that had clues and codes in the park that people were able to go out and find. And then, the Dog Days Summer Photo Contest that the Parks and Recreation Board picked the winners. So we notified them this week, and they will be going out on social media. One was today, the rest this week. The Takeout Bingo was a big success also. We notified those winners, and they collected their prizes. We got some local restaurants to donate gift certificates for the grand prize winner. So that was our way of trying to help local restaurants. We had the Camp in the Box 2.0, which was a big success. Again, we sold, I think, over 35 boxes, again, that were sent out to all the kids. We have an in-person event, Girls in the Run, that'll be starting next week. Actually, just met with the coaches today up in Fairview Park. So that's all ready to go. Then we have another in-person event, Kinder Music, that will be happening also outside in the park. So we have a combination of some virtual and in-person activities going on, which I think is, we're reaching all types of people that want to do virtual and in-person. Other than that, we have some virtual events coming up also. We have the Fairview Fall 5, Virtual 5K, that will be at the end of September. The proceeds are going to go into the South Fayette Community Fund, and then will be, go towards our matching funds for the DCNR Playground Grant. So we've been advertising that and encouraging signups. We got some sponsors for that, and the sponsors' money will pay for t-shirts for everyone and some advertising and prizes throughout the week. And we have some murder mysteries and virtual murder mysteries and trivia night coming up. We also got sponsors that were able to fund those. And with the sponsorship money for both virtual programming and virtual event, we are able to give out prizes and giveaways. So that's where the money is going towards. That's pretty much it for virtual programming and events. Other than that, we've been, you'll see on the agenda that we've been moving forward with the DCNR Playground Grant. So that's exciting. We have some of that work coming up. You guys, last month, I'm asked for, if you go down all the way to the end of my report, you'll see the report from Civic Correct to see how many people are participating in all these events and programs. So if you guys have any questions about the report or any other programs, I'd be happy to answer them.
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Thanks, Paula.
Yep, thank you.
All right, let's move on to police report.
Good evening. Yeah, there's not really a lot to report this month with the police. It's pretty much status quo, as it was last month. Moving along, moving forward through this crazy year. But for the people out there, I would like to say that this Friday, September 11th, the Local Knights of Columbus are going to be holding a, we must never forget ceremony down at Holy Child Church in Bridgeville. And I was invited to speak down there. It's a very moving ceremony. I've been there for several years now. So for anybody out there listening, you're more than welcome to come down there. It starts at 7:00 PM at Holy Child Church. They'll have speakers from the fire department, military, myself. And it's, it's a pretty moving ceremony. So for those that want to wish to come, it's this Friday, 7:00 PM. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to Public Works.
Great. Butch, I saw your name out there. Are you able to talk us through your report?
I am. Just wanted to say that everything that we've been doing, we're working from one end of the township to the other. We're kind of doing a lot of different things. We're working with the pavers, staying ahead, building, rebuilding storm inlets. We just, we did 30 of them in the Lake Mont Plan itself. And we are doing that. And we're backfilling behind the curbs in the 18 and 19 paving program that wasn't in the contract. So we're backing that with topsoil and seeding. And we're also, we've left everything go, and now we're ready to seal Cecil Rising, Cecil Sturgeon, and Ricketts Hill. And also, what we're going to do is there's some trouble spots in the township that sometimes get slippery when it gets a little bit wet, or greasy, or whatever other reason. We're going to seal over that with slag, which is real, it's a real rough aggregate that should take care of all the slippiness that's being caused by people. And after that, we're going to be going to Seminary Avenue to construct a storm sewer to collect the water coming off Preservation Park and also off of Seminary Avenue to take care of some flooding over there. I guess that's about it.
Okay.
Thanks, Butch. Any questions?
I have one question, and this might be more for you, John, than Butch. If you look at the, the week of 8/17, I noticed where it said backfill and seed, Marley Way and Locust Lane. Is that just regular maintenance, or is that to assist with the flooding issues that they had over there?
Butch, I don't have a sense of the, what kind of work did we do over there?
No, Marley Way, Locust Lane, and Dutch Hill. Gwen, that's what we were doing behind the curbs that, because of the paving.
Okay.
Are those roads on the paving list this year, Butch?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Butch, can I just ask, when you mentioned about the slippery, so just to share, I did ask a question earlier this month. I had several residents just ask me if, you know, we had been getting complaints about people slipping on the road in some spots on, and particularly Hickory Grade Road, and I think some others throughout the township. And so it just struck me that once we started talking about it, there's been several people that said, yeah, just, I skid all the time, and I don't know why, on these parts of the road. So I didn't hear everything you said about putting something. Is that normally something that happens? Is there like a reason that happens, or is it just a weird thing?
Well, Lisa, sometimes there's a grit, a grime that gets on the roads. And when you have sharp turns or whatever, it gets there. And a lot of times, you'll see even the state that has the signs up that say slippery and wet, or you see the car kind of swerving.
Yeah.
And what, what we've done in the past, and what we're going to do now, is I talked to Mr. Barrett, and what we're going to do is while we're sealing the roads, we're going to do the bends on Hickory Grade, and we're also going to do the bend, the X bend on School Road by Pinnacle Point.
Yeah. Okay.
And just putting some, putting some aggregate down, making it, making the road have more grip to it is, is the theory behind what they'll do in preparation for the fall.
Okay, I think people will be very happy about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Butch.
Thanks, Butch.
Yep.
Okay, well, let's move on to, since there's no old unfinished business, let's move on to new business. Item A, discuss, review and discuss an ordinance amending Chapter 240 of the Township Code ordinance relating to automobile service stations in the township.
Yeah, this was the, the topic of our public hearing earlier. It's an ordinance that would make service stations a conditional use. And, you know, this listener did a good job of laying out the conditions that we've added. We have submitted to Allegheny County, who provided us with, with feedback. The ordinance is ready for adoption at this point. If there are any questions about the specifics of it, I'd be happy to answer it or to ask Bob or Andy to help us with the details.
Seeing as there's no comments, is there a motion to approve ordinance amending Chapter 240 of the Township zoning ordinance related to automobile service stations in the township? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item B, discuss and consider S-03-2020.
Andy, are you able to walk us through this?
Sure, this is a subdivision on Nesbit Road. And it's a rather odd-shaped parcel of ground. But most of the ground's in South Fayette, but the dwelling itself is in Collier. So they are seeking to divide off a lot where one more home could be built. It's a small lot. It's the same size as a previous lot that was cut out of it. Really, the big issues are just to make sure that there's sewage planning in place. And there were some issues regarding the, the survey itself and how it was laid out on the, on the paper. But I do not have that open, John. The letter, I was not aware that Dawn was not going to be here. You'd be missing some things.
Okay.
This is Debbie Smith. I'm here if anybody has any questions for us about it.
I did speak to Dawn beforehand, who was comfortable with, with everything related to this development. So I pulled his letter up here. It feels like everything that's been commented on has been addressed.
I am here if someone has questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, Dawn.
That's okay. Yeah, the letter speaks for itself. There's one modification requested. The rest of it, commissioners, was related to the resultant tract of ground. It appeared to be used as a farm, but now it falls less than the minimum required of 10 acres. So we were requesting that the applicant agree and put a note on the subdivision. It would be for single-family residential in compliance with your ordinance. Other than that, the items are listed in the Plan and Commission's recommendation letter.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to consider S-03-2020 subdivision application for DND Smith? Paul, 245 Nesbit Road, Zone R2.
I'll make that motion.
Can anyone hear me on there?
Yes.
Our address is 254 Nesbit Road, not 245.
Oops. It does say, oh, you're right, the, it's right on the, it's right on the letter, wrong on the, on the agenda. So I'll make sure 254 is the address we use.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Gwen, if I can just interrupt you, I let everybody know I do have to leave early today from the meeting, so I'm going to sign off, okay?
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you all.
All right, let's move on to item C, discuss and consider SP-05-2020, Pittsburgh SMSALP Expansion Verizon Wireless.
Who wants to handle this one?
I can talk about it, John, if that's fine. This application was, was, it was named Bridgeville 1 North Building. It's an equipment expansion of their existing facility by 14,770 square feet. It's mostly equipment, switching equipment to modernize the system to handle the additional usage at that location. It's located 17 Abilie Road in the Abilie Business Park. It is recommended for approval by the Plan and Commission, subject to the Mitoll Division Letter, dated July 17th and last updated August 17th. Presentations at the Plan and Commission, they were requested to rename the facility to the South Fayette something, because it was currently called Bridgeville 1. They, they agreed to look into that, but because it's a large corporation, they couldn't fully commit to it, but they did agree to try. They, they need to provide a written verification, number of parking spaces, because their use did not comply with the zoning ordinance specifically. We couldn't find a specific use. So we worked with them, and we agree that under sections of the ordinance, we could allow what was going on, but we made it in writing. They also agreed that the planting plan that they were proposing, right as you get to the top of the road at the intersection directly opposite the site, they're going to take out a couple of trees and build a wall. Plan and Commission was concerned about the break in the trees and requested the two to three additional trees be planted in that area to make that still look nice there at the top of Abilie Road. And there was waivers and modifications requested. One was for Buffer Yard C be waived in lieu of the vertical elevation and existing vegetation that's in place. The second waiver modification was for survey monuments to allow iron pins to be set or placed in lieu of the concrete monuments. And the third waiver modification was to waive the sidewalk request, because they're at the end of that, the little short street with the cul-de-sac. There's side, there is no sidewalks located in that area, and they didn't feel they should construct sidewalks at the end of a cul-de-sac with nowhere to go. So they requested a waiver to that. Plan and Commission agreed with all the modifications and requests, and the, the letter has been forwarded to the, to the board for consideration. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so is there a motion to consider SP-05-2020, Pittsburgh SMSALP Expansion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, discuss and consider a motion to advertise for competitive bidding for the Playground Rehabilitation Project of Boys Home Park Playground and Fairview Entrance Pavilion Playground pending DCNR approval.
Just a quick introduction there. This is a grant that we have secured. So when we say pending DCNR approval, it's really just on the administration of it. We have been awarded the grant. They are using a grant portal for us to upload information. It does require us to verify that the, the contract. the, the contracts are, are advertised appropriately, and they have language that DCNR has requested. One thing of note is that this project did require us, with the help of the solicitor, to enter into a restrictive covenant agreement for both parks, basically just outlining that the parks will remain public recreational amenities in perpetuity. I don't think anyone objects to that, I just want to note that, that we had to do that for this project. So this is getting the projects out to bid, we, looking at the timeline that we've put together here, we are looking at a schedule that would award the contract around November, and would have the project start shortly thereafter. We're in line for those to be open for the spring of 2021. We will use Public Works to do some of the demo work, but the, the playgrounds will be rehabilitated and replaced with, with ADA accessible and newer amenities at both locations.
For the one, John, at Boys Home, that playground is being relocated, though it's not going to remain in its current location, will it?
Correct, yeah, there'll be a new spot for it, right.
So do we want to talk about what we were thinking about replacing it with there, or do we want to hold that for board discussion?
No, I think, I mean, we can certainly discuss that, I'm pulled up on the screen here, just a, a quick sketch. A quick sketch that HRG put together for us, our planning, our recreation planning consultants, the thought would be that we could potentially use this area where the playground's being removed as a cricket pitch. The one thing that HRG pointed out to me is the size of this cricket pitch is not regulation, the, the area doesn't lend for it to be up to adult standards. So they suggest that before we move ahead, we just confirm with users that it, it will be large enough for, for them to, you know, to use. I think where they're coming from is, you know, while it won't be, you know, to a professional standard, it will be of the same size as the locations that they're currently using in the league, so it should be acceptable, we just unfortunately can't get it any bigger. And I think I shared with you, Commissioner Rhodey, that we would need to have this project, if we were to pursue it, just be part of a different bidding process, it would require some earth moving to get it to be flat and, and to fit in that space, and we couldn't have that be part of the DCNR grant. So there is space there, where the playgrounds are being removed, the size of the cricket pitch will just be under the, you know, the regulation size.
Okay.
Hey, so can I address it somewhere? This is CM Venkat here.
Yes.
So thanks, thanks, thanks so much, for allowing me to talk here. The, the, what he was mentioning, the size of the cricket field is way bigger than the rest of the fields, what we have in, in the neighborhood now. Well, we have one in Vexford, one in Edgbroke, one in Greensburg, they are very, very smaller than what, what we have in South Fayette. So it's just very good, and South Fayette is doing this, it's, which is very good for us, and because most of the guys in South Fayette, they're going playing around in Upper Sinclair or in Green Tree, and they're spending their dollars over there as well, going to the nearby restaurants and parks. So what you guys are doing is great for us, and great for South Fayette residents as well. And the pitch is perfect for us, because of size and everything, what I have measured, what I have given the measurement, and when they talk to, talk to me, is good for the South Fayette, and good for the cricket as well, to start with.
Great. Well then, hearing everyone say that, we, we can direct HRG to go to final design with this, produce, you know, construction estimates, bring that back to the board, and then we would, you know, advertise the project the same way we are tonight, for that work to commence.
Okay.
And I, I just want to mention too, that it can be used for other sports too, it's going to be a cricket pitch multipurpose, I think is what the plan we were thinking of.
Correct, yeah, good point, Paula.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Go ahead, Don.
I was just going to get us back on track by saying, we, we started by looking for a motion to advertise the
Absolutely.
The project.
Right, a motion to bid, so let's move on to that. Is there a motion to advertise for competitive bidding for the playground rehabilitation project of Boys Home Park Playground and Fairview Entrance Pavilion Playground pending DCNR approval?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Let's move on to item E, discuss and consider a motion to advertise a conditional use public hearing for GSL landscaping on October 14th, 2020.
This is a project that did make it through planning commission, who recommended approval of the conditional use. The timing was such that we couldn't get a hearing prior to tonight's meeting, or in advance of tonight's meeting, the way the meeting's held. So we're looking at bringing this to you in October. Don, I know that you, you wanted to make the board aware of a couple items with the, the applications, or anything that you'd like to point out?
Um, the, the, the application is for a conditional use followed by land development. On the land development portion of it, they are intending to request several modifications, one of which is because the facility is not open for public use, they wish to have a gravel parking lot and entrance driveway, which is several hundred feet back from the paved roadway. They, they will pave the first portion of it, actually, most of that is paved, and then the rest of the way up the hill would be gravel, followed by a gravel parking lot up above, which then leads into other modifications, parking, stripings, things such as that. But because it's not open, the planning commission felt, felt comfortable with it being gravel, it's also a good stormwater infiltration and, and treatment type system. Lighting was of a concern, buffers, there isn't adjoining single-family residential home, so that we wanted to make sure that the lighting was directed away from that house, and also that it was sufficiently planted. But there is, there is a good bit of topographic relief between the two. So those will be the items you'll be discussing at next month's meeting, following, or during the course of the public hearing or immediately following it, those are all in the planning commission recommendation letters.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to advertise conditional use public hearing for GSL landscaping on October 14th, 2020?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item F, discuss and consider a motion to advertise a request for proposal for comprehensive planning services.
Yes, I'd like the board to consider advertising an RFP for this service, our existing comprehensive land use plan was completed in 2013, so while those usually have a 10-year shelf life on them, you know, we're at a point where we should probably start planning for the new one, and given, you know, how the, the community has advanced since 2013, and the Southern Beltway completion looming in front of us, felt like it was good timing. The other thing that I'd recommend we pick up with this process is taking a good hard look at our subdivision and land development ordinances. Last couple months here, we've made some modifications to different parts of our, of our ordinances, whether that be signs, or service stations, or some other items, so this might be an opportunity for us to talk through all of those things on a more global perspective, and, and come up with a series of recommendations to, to overhaul that, that SADO ordinance, as opposed to picking it apart. So we would issue the RFP, we would get proposals back, give us time to interview firms, we'd get firm budget numbers that we would, could include with our 2021 budget, and kick this off at the beginning of the year.
So when we did it in 2013, it was af, it was started before we became commissioners and finished afterwards, and I know, I have a recollection of Lisa not being overly thrilled with the process and the finished product, so I'm, I'm pretty sure she'd want to talk about this before we did anything too, and she's not here, so I just figured maybe you'd want to run this by her as well.
I did mention to her that we were seeking RFPs for this, she was aware of it.
Okay.
I want to speak for her, but
I mean, the RFP part's not a big deal, I just think, you know, we, she was clearly concerned last time, so I just want to make you aware.
No, thank you, we'll make sure we, you know, learn from whatever mistakes we had last time.
All right, I'd make the motion to advertise it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item, item G, discuss and consider a motion to advertise an ordinance amending the Township zoning ordinance to permit a medical marijuana dispensary in the B1 zoning district, and to authorize a growing processing facility as a conditional use in the I1 industrial zoning district.
Any discussion or questions, anyone has?
Is there anyone looking to do that, or is this preemptive?
I think it's preemptive, you know, I think we, we recognize that the, the opportunity exists for facilities like this to want to come into town, and looking at our, our ordinance is, we really haven't defined it, or given much thought to how we, we would regulate, if at all. So this is just an opportunity to, to, you know, get in front of anything.
So these under Act 16 of 2016 are permitted uses in the Commonwealth, that are subject to local zoning requirements, and what we're basically doing is adopting zoning requirements, permitting the dispensary use as a, a conditional use in the B1 zoning district, and the ground processing facility as a conditional use in the I1 industrial district, and we've laid out proposed conditions. The ordinance will have to be submitted to the Allegheny County Department of Development for review and comment. So in connection with this motion, we would also have to advertise a public hearing, but both the potential adoption and public hearing would have to occur at the November board meeting, because of the timing requirements involved with the Allegheny County Department of Development Review.
Well, I'd make a motion to advertise.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item H, discuss and consider a motion to enter into a separation agreement with Andrew Blanco.
Okay, we've been in, township's been advised that Andrew Blanco and township desires to separate his employment from the township. We've prepared a separation agreement that spells out certain conditions and requirements related to the separation. It also contains compensation for him, as well as release. The agreement has been signed by Andrew Blanco, and this is just now formality in order to approve this.
All right, and you're satisfied on our end?
I am.
All right, then I'd make a motion to enter into the separation agreement with Andrew Blanco.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, is there any public comment? All right, seeing as there's no public comment, let's move to the board discussion.
I have nothing.
One thing I was thinking about is, you know, do we want to, do we want to consider setting the date for trick-or-treating, or do we want to wait until next month? If we wait until next month, we're only two weeks away from it, because our next meeting's on October 14th. So is that something we want to discuss, or do you want to wait until we get closer?
I mean, it's on a Saturday this year, so I think we're pretty good, aiming for the 31st.
Yeah, I agree, it's on a Saturday.
So we want to just stick with the traditional Halloween Day, October 31st, from 6 to 8?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep. John, do we need a motion for that?
I think we have enough clarity, but if you want to make, get it on the record, you could make a motion.
That's, that's fine, I think we're good, as long as no one disagrees with that, I think we're good.
Yeah, we don't disagree. Okay.
All right, we'll make sure that we get that word out, just through our, our channels here, so that the community's aware of it in advance.
Cool.
All right, that's all I have. Let's move to manager's report.
Thank you, actually, I had the Halloween discussion on my list here, so thank you for bringing it up. I think we covered most of the things in my written report, I gave you just some detail on the, the reason for the RFP, some depth on the, the playground project. Ben was on earlier, who gave you a quick update on the library's expansion plans and their incremental approach. I, I wanted to comment on a few things related to the municipal complex project, we did have an opportunity, as you're aware, to meet with our architects, who provided us with some conceptual floor plan layouts. We agreed at that meeting, which was not this past Friday, but the Friday before, that we would need about two weeks to give them feedback on, on the options, at which point they would incorporate our feedback, take about another week or two, and then come back to us with some first renderings of, of the exterior. I know I've heard from a lot of you, but if, if any of you haven't given me your feedback before Friday would be great, I'm happy that that project's moving forward, once we have I don't know.
Already, sir, racist.
Once we have, I'm sorry about that, once we have clarity on the, the layout, then we can actually advance the grading plan for, for the site, which would allow us to, to do some of the, the site prep while we talk through the, the exterior renderings and, and, you know, the things that might take a little bit of time. Any questions on that? Is everyone okay with and comfortable with the pace we're moving that project along?
Yes.
I'm happy with it.
Great. I also wanted to mention that last month, we had approved a consulting agreement with Susan Hockenberry for fiscal services. We were able to make a, a good amount of progress this month, both on accounting things, finalizing our financial statement review from our auditors, and getting our, our accounting system up and, in better shape, up and running. We also have started our capital improvement program, planning, as well as our general fund budgeting, and we're, we're hoping that next, next month, when we get to October, that we will present you with, you know, some very rough draft of things, and lay out a, a calendar for budget workshops to be held in October and November. So look for some information from us coming out. Lastly, not on my report, but what I wanted to mention was, earlier in the year, right around January, I, I believe, we had issued an RFP for banking services, and all that's kind of been put on hold with, due to COVID. I think we're at a point now where we can move forward with our next steps there, which would be to, to invite the, I believe there were three financial institutions in the township that we wanted to talk to further about, about providing that service, so I wanted to see if, if maybe we wanted to carve out a, a subcommittee of, of the board, or if the board as a whole wanted to entertain that process, but I think the next step would be to have some face-to-face with the, the financial institutions, to get a sense of their approach to how they would do business with us, and get a better understanding of any, any specialty services they might offer. Is that something that anyone on the board would like to be a part of?
I'd like to.
I'd like to.
Okay. Well, the first thing I'm going to do is just confirm with everyone that the proposals received are still valid, there has been change in the markets, and in, you know, in the economy generally, so I want to make sure that what they pitched to us previously is still something that they would support. Once we have that, we'll get some potential dates, and see if we can get some meetings together, and, you know, make a decision here in the coming months.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thanks.
That's all I have for you guys this evening, unless there's additional questions.
Yeah, I don't have any additional questions. All right, solicitors' report?
Oh, I don't have anything this evening.
Okay, any executive session items?
Nothing that we haven't covered previously, no.
Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned, good night, everyone.
Thank you, bye.
Bye, everybody.